All right. I'd like to call the regular meeting of the Bussayer City School District Board of Education for Thursday, May 22nd to order. Roll call please.
Mr. Stone.
Dr. Johnson.
Here.
Ms. Schiefer.
Here.
Mr. Murphy. Here. Can we have you rise from the plats?
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic which stands one nation, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
I'd like to take a moment and just pay tribute to a strong supporter of the school district in the city. When we lost Mayor Roger Moore the other night, it was quite a shock to all of us. So, if we can take a moment and have a moment of silence. Thank you. Mr. Campbell.
President Murphy, members of the board. It's good to see everybody here this evening. We have several commendations, both adult and student wise. And the first student that we'd like to recognize tonight, I will turn it over to Dr. Burke to recognize our student representative of the Board of Education serving our last meeting this evening.
Do you want to come up here, Ms. Lewis?
Kayla Lewis is a senior at the high school, and, well, just for a few more days, right?
Yes.
Yes, and then be graduating, go to bigger and better things. But we would like to recognize Kayla Lewis for serving as our student representative for the second semester. She's done an amazing job, and so I'd like to take this time to thank her and appreciate her.
Thank you.
The next group of individuals we'd like to recognize tonight are volunteers and mentors from the elementary building. As you know, the work that we do in the school system would not be possible without the help of many, many dedicated folks in the community, of which many of them do not receive compensation for their efforts. So, we had quite exhaustive lists just from the elementary school tonight. I know May is a very difficult time of the year, and we have some individuals that have to get away for ballgames, so I know there's lots of conflicts with adults, but I do appreciate those of you that showed up tonight, and appreciate everybody that's on the list that is being recognized tonight. I know our teachers, our administration, and Board of Education really appreciates the effort that you put forth on behalf of our kids. So, at this time, I'm going to turn it over to Mr. Roll, our building principal, along with Kim Light, our guidance counselor, who is actually in charge of all the, coordinating all the mentors and volunteers from the elementary building. If we could ask everybody that comes up tonight to receive the certificate, we'll ask everybody to go around and shake the Board of Education Administration's hands, and then we'll snap a group photo out in the lobby before you exit. So, the good thing is, is that you are excused after you receive your commendation. You're more than welcome to stick around for the rest of the meeting, but you do have permission to leave after this if you'd so choose.
Okay. Sure.
I don't have much to say, except thank you. Thank you. We just have such a bunch of dedicated people. Our red hat ladies, they are like so faithful, come in the rain, the wind, the storm, the snow. They even get their own subs if necessary. And the greeters, usually, I started this when I first went to the elementary, and I decided if it's good enough for Walmart, there must be something to it. So, I asked the fifth grade kids to take turns opening the door in the morning, welcoming the kids as they come in, greeting them, saying good morning, calling them by name, and this year, I had three boys that were just super. I could not have asked for better boys. I never had to check on them. They were dependable, they were friendly, responsible. If something went wrong, they came and told me, "Mrs. Light, I think there's a problem out here," and so I just really, really appreciate everything you all have done to make our building a much better place, a much friendlier place. So, thank you.
Very good. I'll say I can't say much more than that, other than thank you as well. And as far as when they, you know, you talk about how many folks it takes to make a building great, you know, this is testimony to it right here. So, we'll read the names of everyone who was recognized, and if your name is red and you're here, we'll ask that you come up, please. Ronnie Agler. Mary Ann Appleby.
I'll take hers.
You'll take that. Oh, okay. Sierra Aubrey.
They take care of each other.
Lisa Blizzard.
Thank you, Lisa.
If you will stand up here with us, please. Bryce Moonfield. She said enthusiastically. Maxine Brown.
Thank you, Maxine.
Denise Clayton.
I thought I tried to take her.
Max Constantine. Shelley Darnell. Lucy Dix. Deb Dostal. And Mike Dostal. Fran Easterday. Oliver Faulkner. George Grammas. Virginia Hammond Tree.
I guess it just shows that volunteers are busy people.
That's true.
They're involved in a lot.
We got to thank you.
Thank you, Virginia. We appreciate your help.
Charles Kissling III. Reverend Don Krabs. Nima Litesi. Nina Litesi. I call her Mrs. Litesi.
Thank you, Nina.
Peter Maynard. Susan Maynard. Joanne Miller. Lady Malinkoff. It's also very important to point out that we have the range in age of our volunteers, or the young to the young at heart, and so we very much appreciate all that they share with us in that regard as well. Kayla Pierce. Dean Quaintness. Taylor Rossman. George Thornton. Dorothy Truman.
I'll take first two when I come up.
All right. Dorothy Watts. You gonna take that one? Thanks. Very much. Denise Whitmire. Now, Mrs. Williams, when you retire, will you still let him come and play with us, or more importantly, will you join him? Thank you very much. All right, schedule? Especially those librarians are already after that. Meredith Wilson. David Wise. Gina Wright. Now, we have our door greeters. And Cale Scott. And I can say that Cale did not just begin his duties once he was at the door and in place, ready to go. Part of my duties is outside in the morning, and I would pass him aid each day, and as we would meet on the sidewalk, he always offered first a big smile and a "Have a great day." And so, we appreciate that, and again, we appreciate all of our volunteers. Thank you very much. Hope you're not circling that way. Board of Education and students, we'd like to shake your hand.
We want to thank you for coming this evening, if you're here to receive the commendation, and if you have, everybody who received one, to, for a group picture on the hallway would be great. Come up here. Welcome to go this way, or, yeah. This light out. Thank you. You've already been to it. It's like, lots of, especially Connor. He's been to the deep end. Hi, guys.
One more layer to go, guys.
That's right. That was you, Ken. Thank you very much for coming. Thank you, Sarah. Thank you, Mrs. Williams.
I know you, you know what? I put some stuff in.
Yeah.
You just go back to your films.
Well, that was, yeah.
Oh, yeah.
Yeah.
Take care.
Kayla, we ran everybody out of here.
No, that's her.
Right in the middle?
No, this is her. Yeah, I think it works.
Okay, the next part of the agenda, we have presentations, and I'm very happy to have our student graduate, or senior, soon to be graduated, senior Haley Chester, to come forward. Haley was part of a group of seniors who completed the Senior Caston Project this year at our high school, and Robin Showers, who is with her tonight, was the person from our district to help coordinate those efforts with the senior English teacher, and very proud of not only Haley, but her classmates that completed this project this year. Ms. Lewis was another one that I was fortunate enough to see present about a week ago, and I think that all in all, and I can let, I won't steal the thunder from Haley, but I think it was a good learning experience for our seniors, and one that I hope to continue to build on. Each of the county schools that took part in it this year, there was four of the six county schools that did it, ours, each school district had a little bit of a different way of approaching it. We were very set on wanting to make sure that they had some connection to a career, and they also had some opportunity to do some job shadowing, or a mentor in the field that they wanted to go into. Not all school districts did that. Some focused on an interest, but maybe not necessarily a career, but I think the career focus has been a good focus for our seniors going through it this year, and I got an opportunity to see two of our students present in front of the Education and Business Advisory Council earlier in the week, and Kennedy Crawford was the other senior, along with Haley, that presented there, and they did a phenomenal job, and I know I'm a little biased, but they were the two best in the county that presented. So, wonderful job. It was not a competition, but if it was, we wouldn't randomly.
Only because we had to.
That's right. So, without further ado, Haley Chester.
Okay, I'm just gonna go ahead, you guys can pass my portfolio around if you'd like to look at it. It has my senior paper and all my stuff from it, but it's covered in it. And I'm just gonna talk a little bit about myself. I've been a cheerleader for four years in student council, a member of DECA, which I don't know if you guys all know what DECA is, but we go to competitions, and the past two years, I wrote thirty-page papers, and last year, I made it to nationals in Anaheim, California, and this year, I made it sixth in the state. And I titled my project, "Changing the World of Medicine." I started with my process, and for my research paper, I chose a nurse practitioner, and for my, sorry, I asked how they were prepared to doctors, and then I asked how they were likable in our community. I'm gonna talk about nurse practitioners, what they are. They're basically, in short, they act as doctors, but with certain limitations, and my actual interest is pediatrics. I did my job shadowing, Aveda Therapy and Sports Medicine with Janelle Walldozer. When I first went to Aveda, the Aveda Center, I didn't know if they actually had a nurse practitioner working there. I got it set up through the hospital, and they had just sent me there because I was interested in the medical field. So, I actually got to work a lot more with the PTA, so, physical therapy assistants, and I helped them with the patients, the hot packs, the cleaning equipment, and things like that. This is my mentor, Janelle. She is a nurse practitioner, specializes in occupational health. She went to Ashland and Otter Bay. I didn't actually spend that much time with my mentor, I know a lot of the other students really enjoyed the time they got to spend with their mentor. I actually only spent fifteen minutes, probably, like the ten hours I was at the place. So, my time, actually, job shadowing, I spent seventeen hours at the Aveda Center, and my log project hours, I spent ten and a half hours, and that doesn't lose the time I took to write my research paper, conduct my survey, or any of my research I did. Now, I'm just starting with my project, which I chose to do a survey in our community. I started with my essential question for my research paper, which was, are nurse practitioners a legitimate source of primary care? Then I created three learning goals, which were, do nurse practitioners have as much freedom as doctors? Do nurse practitioners have a good client base? And what are the outside perceptions of nurse practitioners? Well, that's the main question I focused on for my project, because in 2015, there's expected to be a shortfall of sixty-two thousand physicians because of the ACA or the Obamacare. These are all my survey questions, they're also in my portfolio, I'm not gonna go through them all, because I'm actually gonna go through all the answers and things like that in a second. Now, I'm gonna go through the findings. These are all the age groups I surveyed. I surveyed a hundred and thirty people in our community at school, where, grocery stores, and the library. It was really weird going up to people and asking them to fill out a survey, or ask them questions, so I wish I actually could've changed that about my project, maybe there's a lot of online resources I could've used to do the survey instead. The first question was, who is your normal primary care member? Twenty-one people actually already see nurse practitioners. Have you ever heard any discrepancies about nurse practitioners? A hundred and thirty people said no, but I don't know if they really didn't know what discrepancies meant. And have you ever heard, or ever been to a nurse practitioner? Forty-six people had actually been to a nurse practitioner. Do you feel our country has a shortage of primary care doctors? A hundred and seven people said yes. Do you think nurse practitioners can take over the role of doctors? Eighty-two people said yes. And with Obamacare in operation, do you feel there are more insured patients in our county? A hundred and twelve people said yes. By April first, there were seven point one million people signed up for the ACA. In my conclusions, I focused on these main questions, which, do you think there's a shortage of doctors? Do nurse practitioners, can they take over the role of physicians? And with the ACA, do you believe there are more insured patients? Which a lot of them said yes, according to my graph. So, in conclusion, twenty-one people already see nurse practitioners full-time, while forty-six have actually been to one. None surveyed have heard discrepancies, so we think. A hundred and twelve people surveyed believe with the ACA, there are more insured patients, and with a shortage of doctors, nurse practitioners can take over some roles of primary care physicians. In my portfolio, you'll be able to see, there's actually one in there that shows that someone filled out, they think they can take over the role, but not all the roles, because they really can't take over the whole of doctors. And nurse practitioners can't take over the shortage of doctors. Doctors will only be needed for serious cases, besides, doctors are famous for making mistakes anyway. I'm gonna walk you guys through my experience. My research paper, it was pretty much a breeze, writing thirty-page papers two years in a row made my research paper really easy for me. The job shadowing, I was a bit disappointed, because I didn't get to spend as much time with the nurse practitioner, with my mentor, as a lot of the other kids did, but I did get to spend an awesome amount of time with the PTA's, and they just made my experience awesome there. The patients were also amazing. I loved seeing them grow. I was there for, like, I was there for the seventeen hours, and every week, they would come in, just improving, improving, improving. With physical therapy, you can see all of those patients improving. On the time, and the survey for my project were very time-consuming. I didn't realize going into this project that I was gonna take up so much time. And what I would do differently, I would survey more people, maybe do the survey online, I know there's a lot of other resources I could've used. And for nurse practitioners, I went ahead and looked at the outlook in Ohio. Most of the job opportunities are available in Cleveland and Cincinnati, and about five thousand annual openings for nurse practitioners, and through 2020, the growth rate is expected to be twenty point four percent, which is a lot higher than other occupations. I still want to continue to pursue this career, and I plan on doing so by attending North Central State College in the fall to major in nursing. Do you guys have any questions?
Roll call.
Talk a little bit, the question I heard was asked the other day was, the amount of schooling involved for nurse practitioners?
Nurse practitioners, about six to eight, depending on how long, I mean, and how fast you go through your schooling. You have to get your RN, your BSN, and then eventually your masters, plus all your clinicals and things like that, so it's very time-consuming.
Just affirm what you want to do as a career?
Yes.
In your experience?
Yes. And this actually helped, I mean, a lot of the kids, once they went through their projects, they actually didn't want to do their career anymore, which I think this project helps that a lot, because if I realized I didn't want to do this, then that would've been good, because I didn't want to go to school for something that I thought I wanted to do, but realized I didn't.
What are the limitations that they have in comparison to a regular physician?
Most of them would be prescription writing, I mean, narcotics, things like that. Do most of them work, sorry, side by side with doctors anyway, so it wouldn't be that hard to get most of the prescriptions approved anyway.
Well, that was my question. Did they have to run into supervision of a physician, or?
Yeah, most of them do work, they have like their own practice. Janelle actually works with another doctor, I forget his name, but he's through in Gallion. So, like, she works on her own most of the time, but is also in his office other days.
Haley, wonderful job. Good luck in the future. Do you have a school picked out?
North Central State College.
Good. Mrs. Sharpe, I don't know if you want to add anything more to maybe the feedback that you've received from the students, and, you know, the, maybe the pieces that were all connected to putting senior project together?
With the senior project, there was a process that the students had to go to, of course, with Mrs. Henice's English four class, they had to write a research paper based on a career. And I look back now and think, gosh, I would've liked to have had them select a career that they had some interest in, if at all, maybe one that they want to pursue, because some picked maybe an interest that, actually a career that they were not even interested in, maybe because it was easier to find out research on. So, that made it more difficult than when they went to job shadow, because they had to find somebody, for example, a midwife. Those aren't that, there aren't that many here around Bussayer's. There are some traditional midwives, but you have to go to Mary and find the ones that work for doctors, so, or like a game warden, that was a search that we had to undertake. But the community, as far as the professionals in the community, they were very open to having the kids come, and by far, that made such a tremendous impact. Haley did hers on human resource management, hooked up with Cassie Grau out at Ohio Mutual, and I met her yesterday, too, so she is priceless to have you come out there. And I think all the kids would've liked to have spent more time, and looking back, at least some of them discovered, no, I don't want to do this anymore. So, they did the research paper, they had to put together a portfolio, which you see there, getting my approval, the parents' okay, the mentors' okay, they had the log hours. They had to do at least fifteen hours, and I gave them some class time to do that as well. This is all new to them, of course, and then the presentation. So, they had several different things they had to do, and a product or performance, a lot of them, I should say, most of them, except one, did a PowerPoint. Some did products, like Haley had a brochure she put together. One of our students did a house model drafting, because he was looking into carpentry. But the kids all agreed that it was a good thing to go through. It was challenging for them. It made them push themselves, extend their learning, and that's what we helped them do. And probably on half of them discovered that they don't want to go into this field that they researched on, because it was too much math, too much science, too much schooling, more than they wanted to undertake. But all in all, I have to thank the community for opening their doors to our kids, because it made a world of difference. Tracy was one of our judges. I was able to easily find three judges per, each of the days we did this, we had either three students present, or two per of the time, and they all dressed very professionally and nicely, and they did a fabulous job. I'm proud to have been their advisor for this, proud to have worked with them, and proud to have been part of this for the school district, too. So, thank you.
You know what was amazing to me, I mean, and Mr. Foreman had an opportunity to sit in a lot of, if not all of, the senior projects, I know Dr. Burke, it was really neat to see how the students, almost every one of them, it wasn't in your presentation, most of them said that they'd learn, if they had to do it over again, it would, wouldn't.
Cross the mat.
Yeah. And they said that, you know, put it off, put it off, and these are things that when they go to college, they're gonna have to learn how to manage their time, and when big projects come due, you know, they're gonna really have to figure out when to get it done. And everyone, you know, these kids are busy. I mean, they're not only going to school full-time, a lot of them have jobs, they're involved in extracurricular activities, putting this on top of it, seemed very daunting, I think, at the beginning of the school year, but I'm glad they went through the rough patch of figuring out how to get it done. And stand up and speaking in front of folks is a tough skill to learn how to do, putting together the technology piece, the wonderful PowerPoint, those, all these things that they learned are gonna benefit them for the next portion of their life. Good job.
On behalf of my classmates, I would like you guys to consider us being somehow recognized at our graduation for this.
Pick that up with Dr. Burke. Thank you.
Thank you.
Next up, I'd like to introduce this. to manage their time, and when big projects come due, you know, they're going to really have to figure out when to get it done. And everyone, you know, these kids are busy. I mean, they're not only going to school full-time, a lot of them have jobs, they're involved in extracurricular activities. Putting this on top of it seemed very daunting, I think, at the beginning of the school year, but I'm glad they went through the rough patch of figuring out how to get it done. And stand-up and speaking in front of folks is a tough skill to learn how to do. Putting together the technology piece, the wonderful PowerPoint, those, all these things that they learned are going to benefit them for the next portion of their life. Good job.
On behalf of my classmates, I would like you guys to consider us being somehow recognized at our graduation for this.
Take that up to Dr. Burke. Thank you.
Thank you.
Next up, I'd like to introduce Mrs. Deb Pooper. And Deb is our literacy coach in the district, and she'd like to share a little bit of what took place this year with regards to balanced literacy training. She is actually sitting in for Mr. Henderson tonight, and we're very excited with the work that she had done with our staff this year, and we'd like to share a little bit more about the balanced literacy training and approach that our elementary staff took part in this year. So, Mr. Burke.
For those of you who might not be aware of how this all started, we were part of a literacy grant through MLBSC, and along with the Allen Buckeye Central Shelby, like the Presskill in Northmore. And the money, we met over at MLBSC last year about how exactly to use this grant money, how we could best benefit our districts, and what we could do to fund some literacy, some, you know, literacy training, and what else we could do with it. We decided to purchase a Wilson Foundation's systematic implicit phonics program. It was one of the main things that we were missing, and so were some of the other districts as well. Very few of them had any type of a phonics program, other than what came in our series, which is very limited. By far, the leading cause of reading difficulty is a phonological core deficit, that is, the inability to kind of know how our language works, to be able to take words apart and put them back together. So that's what a phonics program does. It teaches children how to hear the sounds in language, and how to take words apart to become better readers. So, the grant funded the purchase of that for all of our K-2 teachers and students. We got classroom kits, and we also got training from Wilson Language Company, which is one of the biggest, Wilson Language Learning is one of the most highly-respected language companies in the country. And they sent their coach to us four different, on four different days. She would work with our teachers, she would go in and model the lessons, she would talk with them, answer questions. So we had a lot of support from them. And we also, for as long as we are using this program, we have free online support through their coaches. We always can contact Sherry or any of their other coaches, and so it's a really good program to have. They also wanted to do some PD. We decided as a group of schools to do a PD. We decided to do ours in-house, but the grant provided a continuum of literacy learning, a guided teaching by Basit Pennell and Irene Fontas. It's a teacher resource manual that's very nice to have in the classroom. So each one of our teachers, K-3, got that as well. And then they had four half-day PD sessions, each one focusing on an aspect of a balanced literacy instruction program, and it was geared to our population. And just as a little bit, one of the things we talked about first was that there are two very separate components of reading development, and I think a lot of times we tend to forget that. The first one is the mechanical, and children have to know how print works in our lives, that's the concepts of print part, and they have to understand how books work, textbooks, whatever they are. And then there's that phonological core, that's how well they understand our language. And those two things can lead, if those are strong, then they can lead to fluency in reading and the automaticity of being able to rifle through that filing cabinet in your brain, pull out words, and do it quickly. But that's very, very separate from the comprehensive end of reading. The comprehension part is all based on language and vocabulary, how well the child can engage in reading, their life experience, and the background knowledge that they bring to the table when they're reading something. So that's what we kind of tackled first. Unfortunately, struggling readers usually look like this. They have the concepts of print, the basic levels down, they understand how print works, but the phonological core is very weak. They don't understand how our language works. So they may understand, you know, that, yet they try to see a word and memorize the word, but they can't take it apart and break it down. If you ask a struggling reader, what does AU say, for example, they should be able to tell you "aw", like in Australia or Austin, and they usually can't. They say, "I don't know." So when they get to a word with that in there, they have no idea what to do. So consequently, the fluency and their automaticity, there isn't any. And because of that, a lot of times, the comprehension, it really, these are two, actually, two very separate things. But when children struggle here, if they do most of their reading silently, this one will also lag. If this is done, if the comprehension part can be done in group settings, where you're doing a lot of discussion, and you're walking the kids through what's happening in that text, even if they're struggling mechanically, they can still get what's happening in that story. So that's what we talked about in our PD. We started out by thinking about reading development like a child climbing through a window. In kindergarten, the window is wide open, and you can start from the ground up and you can build them. Now, granted, if they don't have a preschool experience, it makes it harder for the children, but they're still little, and you can still build those experiences. At grade one, you kind of think of it, the window's open, but it might need a prop to hold it up a little bit. By grade two, the window is closing, and only a few of the kids can wiggle through there. If they don't have, by grade two, they're now reading to learn, they're not learning to read. And there's a very big difference there. And by grade three, the window's pretty much closed. Their curriculum no longer includes mechanical reading skills to fill in all the gaps. They're expected to know how to read mechanically by third grade. They've moved on now to the comprehension part of reading. So that's why it becomes, the gap gets bigger and bigger and bigger and bigger, it's exponential as the kids go through the grades. At the grade three, the window for mechanical reading is gone altogether. By fourth grade, fifth grade, there just isn't any opportunities to learn to read. And yes, you can do some interventions and things, but it's difficult when the child may only have twenty minutes to work at that. At the lower grades, they do it all day long. So we wanted to look at how do we change things to make sure our children don't develop that big gap. So we focused on two main goals. For the mechanical needs, the Wilson Foundations Program. And we were very fortunate to get that. They are not inexpensive, it's an expensive program, but we were very fortunate to have that as part of this grant. So we felt very lucky to have gotten those kits. They're great. They have all kinds of little letters, and the kids can manipulate them all. Each child has their own magnetic board and tiles, and they move all the tiles, they build words, and it's a really neat program. It also does a lot of repetition and echoing, where the kids have to echo words and rapids in session, which is a skill for reading. Then we also focused on the comprehensive needs. We developed a literacy, a literature-focused hierarchy for Bussars. The most effective way to build comprehension skills is through those literature experiences. Read aloud, choral and shared reading, but what is most important is that it has to have critical discussion throughout that reading to build vocabulary and comprehension strategies. When children read silently, they are left to their own devices. It depends on what their skill level is. If they're a very accomplished reader, they'll do okay. If they're not, then they get out of it whatever their skill level is. If it becomes a shared discussion, then you can kind of guide what they're getting out of that experience. So they can also gain life experience and language experiences by looking vicariously through characters, because we can't all experience everything, but by characters through books, you can. This is the hierarchy that we developed, it's in your handout. We wanted to make sure that every student coming out of the elementary building has a working knowledge of nursery rhymes, fairy tales, folk tales, fables, fractured fairy tales, tall fields, myths and legends, and an introduction to mythology. When children don't have that basis, it's very difficult to ever get beyond the introductory level at the high school or the middle school. If the middle school decides to go into something like mythology, or even, I know the middle school does some fairy tales. If the child's never heard the original versions, and they have no background in it whatsoever, that eighth-grade teacher or that seventh-grade teacher is left to start at the introductory level. So you never can get any deeper into those questions, because you're always introducing something. So by doing this, the kids get a good basis for all of those things coming out of the elementary building. Then when they get to the middle school, they can dig a lot deeper into that text and go into all those things that the author meant, and all those deeper messages in what they're reading. And we also have a lot in there with rhythm and rhyme, and music lyrics, poetry, all those things that make for a solid literary base. This is just one example of what you can do, like, this is the vocabulary that comes out of fairy tales. I mean, those are all words that kids would not come across in their everyday lives, and it's like, this is just verbal. But it's a fun way for kids to get to learn words just in, by doing that unit. Each of our teachers are going to spend one grading period on their particular section of the hierarchy. So it, they are doing a lot with the read alouds, they're doing a lot with picture books, they're doing a lot with the kids doing some shared reading, and with their small-group guided reading. So as a result of the PD sessions, we discovered the value of a complete systematic phonics instructional program for reading, writing, and spelling. As we went through this PD, and by the end of the year one, the teachers were starting to say, wow, I noticed a big difference in my kids, particularly in their spelling. So that really surprised them, I think. I don't think, you know, initially, they weren't sure whether it was that much different, but what they're saying is, some of them are now saying they're going, they get it, they understand, they can explain why, text silently on the end makes that how long, they can explain it now. And they're using it in their writing, they're using it in a lot more than just reading. The read aloud, we also discovered the value of the read aloud as a means of going far beyond the story, building vocabulary, of developing critical listening and discussion skills, of developing comprehension strategies, modeling fluency. It's a great, there are so, so many skills that you can include in a read aloud. It's also, they also have decided that having a forum for discussion within and across grade levels, as well as across the content areas, was very valuable. The teachers had an opportunity to really sit and talk about things and their instructional practices. They did the peer observations, we included that in there, and they each observed one of their colleagues doing both a read aloud and a phonics lesson. And that was great for prompting discussion, for collaboration, and sharing ideas with one another. They decided that, because at first, it was like, we have the time for this, but they did it, and they actually said, this was really good, we're really glad we did this. So I think it's well worth the time, you know, we told them, you know, you don't have to make a big deal about it, just pop, you know, if you want to put your two classes together, pop in and have one person teach and one person watch. So we tried to make it as easy as possible, and it worked. They, most of them did combine their classes, they walked next door and watched somebody, and then they came over, and it was a great means of sharing instructional strategies. Going forward, what we would like to do is continue working toward that full implementation of the Wilson Foundations. We had to do it a little bit at a time, because it has a lot of routines, which the kindergartners are learning first, and then as they get, then the first graders will know them next year, and so on. So second grade was kind of, had the biggest hurdle, because the kids didn't know any of the things, so they had to start from scratch. But we want to expand it also next year to include third grade. The third grade teachers actually asked, could we get this? So we're trying to get the student pieces, so that they can continue the word building, and their, the third grade program works a lot on Greek and Latin root words, and prefixes and suffixes, which would be great for our kids in building vocabulary. We would also like to continue to utilize the online support system. We want to embed the grade-level literature focus into a year-long write-to-read type of a culture, rather than one week, and use our VES library, as well as the public libraries' resources. We'd like to expand this particular PD to include teachers at the four to eight levels next year, and provide additional PD opportunities for teachers to earn college credit. Ashlyn gave them an hour credit for this PD, so I think that was also helpful. Any questions?
I have, first, kudos to Deb for that presentation, and I loved, it was Music 20 Years, to hear the vocabulary part. I said for years, teaching in the district, that that was the weakest element for our kids, was vocabulary, and I could tell instantly who my readers were just by speaking with them because of their vocabulary, so I loved hearing that. I had a couple of questions, though. I'm assuming sight words are still part of this?
Yes.
That's not okay?
Yes, in that balancing, the visual cue is kind of a natural thing for kids anyway. We still are doing, we're continuing to do the sight words like we always have, and then we're just putting in this more, more systematic phonics. What we had been doing was in the series, which was more like highlights for different sections, but it wasn't enough for so many of the kids who struggled, so...
Also, though, I still struggled somewhat with, where do we teach them how to read silently? Because obviously, by third grade, they have to take that achievement task.
Well, and that is still, that is still a part of, we talked a lot about the stop, drop, and read. We are trying to build that into the schedule, so that every grade level will be doing a, like, a drop everything and read, or a something to that effect, where we're going to try to carve out a fifteen-minute block per grade level, and the entire floor, I've talked with Mr. Souter about that in the scheduling, to see whether that would be possible. You were next on my list. But when he and I were talking about schedules, and I said, is there any way that we can schedule that type of a thing, and whether it would be first thing in the morning, whether it would be, but we'd like to find grade-level time, he didn't think we could do it building-wise. I'd love to see the whole building drop everything and just do it, but I don't think we can because of schedules. But even if we do it by floor, or by, because the silent reading is still very important, but it's more guided versus unguided. We have to have a huge bulk of guided, rather than mostly unguided and some guided.
That comes, the oral comes first, as akin to children learning how to talk.
Right.
You know, because some of our folks, and then again, learning and changing, when you talk to your child, you talk to your, you don't put your baby in a corner and let it talk to itself. You talk to it, you know, baby talk, and things like this, and you know what? And then, after a while, when they're playing, they talk to themselves, continue on. Well, same thing with reading. With the reading, we want the read aloud, we want the modeling, we want that to happen, and when they establish that, then can come, okay, now you can read to yourself, because if you've got a person, the kids that don't have that silent reading ability, say, here, you go over and sit, it'd be like, you know, putting a baby in a corner and not talking to it, wanting children to know how to talk.
I agree, I just, my concern has always been, by third grade, you're assuming, the state's assuming, okay, everybody now, you're around the balance of stuff.
It's one, you know, it's guided reading, you know, read aloud more kindergarten, and that kind of drops, and then the other kind of, you know, inversely increases.
And in your packet, there's also a, there's a graphic that has some circles on it, and that, it's a fiction, nonfiction thing. The Common Core has a lot now with nonfiction, so that's kind of a, it is a kind of a guide for what, and we talked about it in this PD, about how we start with a seventy percent fiction at kindergarten to thirty percent nonfiction. You build that as you go, and by high school, it's flipped, and it is seventy percent nonfiction and thirty percent fiction. The seventy percent nonfiction being the content areas, and your ELA classes doing the fiction. But it is, but you're right, Tracy, it is very important, I think, that we do make sure that the kids build those skills, so that as they get older, they can, do have those skills already, that they can do silently, and do them on their own. And the other thing is to develop a love of reading. What we're finding is so many kids don't want any part of it, because it's difficult for us.
Well, kudos.
Well, kudos. My second trace is, it's a great program. It seems like it's kind of focusing on the left side of the scale in terms of the mechanical. But how do you, how do you address a school system, lack of basic background knowledge, like experience of K-2 better?
And that is, that is, the underlying focus of this is that, it's kind of a byproduct. Although initially, it looks like more of the focus is on the mechanical end of reading, it is the mechanics that support all the rest of it. So if we can, and my thing has always been that when children are mechanically low, we tend to, they tend to be comprehensively low by default, which is what we don't want to have. We want to make sure that even if they are mechanically struggling, those comprehension skills can continue to build. That's why we focused so much on the read alouds, because you can do those think aloud strategies and teach children how to comprehend, so that as these skills come up on the mechanical side, those comprehension strategies are already there. If they build mechanical skills and they don't have the comprehension strategies, now you've got a kid who's trying to work on both things and it's very difficult to bring it up. But you're right, I mean, it is a huge issue. Our biggest issue right now is mechanics.
And the big thing also, and thanks to our Board of Education Administration offering support for our preschool, increasing that, you know, and here again, the more opportunities we have for our youngest children to be exposed to literature and reading, and again, even if, you know, we get them in there to preschool and then make an impact there, and then kindergarten, the gap is less. So we've already taken steps.
I had to make sure I had two of them.
Deb doesn't blow her bone more than I, and I will for a second. Obviously, we're very fortunate to have her working with our, our staff and our students. Big way through this grant, back in the late fall, I started to realize that we were pulling all of our K through two teachers out of the district, sent to Mansfield, being instructed by Deb. And I started scratching my head. I'm not a real bright person, but when it comes to sending all of our teachers over to Mansfield to be instructed by one of our own, I started to ask questions on why, and realized that Deb, you know, was, you know, she is well-respected not just in our district, but several, you know, three, four county area, and she was doing a lot of the training over there for the school district. So I simply said, either we're going to be reimbursed for Deb's time, or Deb staying in our district and we're not traveling to Mansfield. And so that's what we ended up doing. I ended up saying to Deb, you know, you're going to do these, can you do these balanced literacy trainings with our staff in our district? And she'd ask, absolutely. The teachers are afforded opportunity and actual credit because she is now a junior professor through Ashlyn, and so a huge asset in our district again. Do appreciate all the work that she's doing. The nice thing about the Wilson's Foundations, it's not an add-on, it's a piece that goes along with the rest of the literacy puzzle that we're doing. As you know, that's a big focus, if we can get kids to learn how to read at a younger age level, it takes care of a lot of issues down the road. And so we have lots of, we've sunk lots of time, energy, and resources at the early level, and that we'll continue to build our school system and improve the education that we provide for students in the district. Thank you, Deb. Okay, next piece, I would like to invite Kevin Forman to the floor, and obviously, Kevin is our Director of Educational Options, and he has a presentation to share. A year ago, when we talked about creating an educational options program, it was, it was, you know, even though we're facing uncertain financial times, one of the pieces that was presented to the board is an opportunity to offer non-traditional educational opportunities for our kids to be stars and not lose kids, and I'm happy to report a year into it that we're making great strides. And so I asked Kevin and Dr. Burke to present kind of a year one wrap-up of that options, and then the goals going into year two. So.
Thank you. Mr. Pimmel took that introduction perfectly because it was about that, almost a year, maybe thirteen, fourteen months ago, that we started working on this. And so I'm pleased, as Mr. Pimmel said, along with Dr. Burke, to give you some updates from the last twelve, twelve months here. And technology is great, as we're talking about online learning, so.
Here we go. Okay, I'll sit here. Okay, that's fine. So again, just as a refresher from the Board of Education's point of view and your decisions from last year, this is a recap of all of the reasons and the goals of what we're doing with our educational options program. And we have, in almost all five or six of those areas, touched upon them, some more than others this last year. So, these are a few of the actual numbers that we've accomplished here over the last school year. We have been able to work with seventy-one different students, and as of today, this has been updated at about two-thirty this afternoon, we had yet another student complete a semester course. So to date, with another week and a half or so of school to go, we have had students complete a hundred and forty-two semester courses online. Now, not to be confused with college semesters, but they are semester courses at the high school level, so as such, most of them are worth a half of a Carnegie unit or half a year credit, and we have issued seventy high school credits to students via our online curriculum. A kind of is a, an offshoot that maybe the intelligent ones that were involved in planning this knew about, but I think it's also been an unexpected advantage, is the next piece here, and Mr. Dennison and Dr. Burke both will, will talk to this a lot more if you ask them to. But by having a certain element of students working on online programming in our annex building and the educational options classroom, that also was, as a byproduct, was able to improve some of the classroom scenarios as far as disciplines concerned, the lunchroom and the cafeteria, because certain students were more involved online rather than being engaged in less than favorable activity sometimes in the cafeteria, and also just the general front building or the main high school area, the overall atmosphere in and out of the classroom changed, and it was for the positive. We've also, as kind of an offshoot, been able to work with a number of students this year through the state mandated flexible credits, and this is kind of tied in together along with our educational options program. I know this is a small print screen here, but this gives you a breakdown, not that you can really see or read it, but it's a breakdown by content of not only the various core courses that have been offered, but to the left, or excuse me, to the right of each of those, how many courses have been successfully completed by students. And two things just to point out here, because we're evenly matched between on the upper left and the upper right-hand corners, we have mathematics, we've been able to give forty-three different classes to different students for their successful completion, and forty-four in the English Language Arts. The others are in their twenties and some miscellaneous electives, but I think that speaks volumes to not only the fact that the State Department of Education now requires four credits for high school seniors to graduate with both math and English, but also knowing that those are two areas, because of that requirement, that we also have some of our students that need some assistance as well. And it would not be without the dedication of both Mr. Steve Hall and Ms. Allison Noyes that have been working with the students directly with the program this year, that these numbers and this success would, would not have been possible. Here's a little bit of a breakdown, just as we've got a pie and a bar graph here, to break down the number of courses that were completed by each grade level, and it should come as no surprise that not only did we have the most students that were seniors working on this online coursework, but they had the most motivation, and you'll notice by the number of completed courses, nearly seventy courses completed for those seniors, and again, we had right about sixteen, seventeen students that were seniors working towards that. As a result of that, I'm very proud to announce that, that at least in one way or another, in about two days, you'll be presented nine students out of the class of two thousand and fourteen that have been involved with the educational options program. Some in a small way, and some clearly would never have graduated this year without the program. Now, that's not to say that we didn't have our problems and things did not go perfectly, because there were a few challenges and limitations that we continue to address, and these are just two or three of them. The first two really deal with the, the technology. We realize that many of the students that we dealt with this year were motivated to get into the school and to get into the classroom and work with our teachers, but they had very limited resources at home. Not every kid has a computer in their house, and that was the biggest challenge and limitation. Even though Mr. Baines worked with us as best he could to free up some laptops here and there to get up to the students, that certainly is a limitation that we found. And had we more resources on the hardware part of that, to distribute that to our students, I know that those numbers of success would have been even higher. Going hand-in-hand with that, of course, is the second piece with, with the lack of connectivity. Clearly, if you don't have a computer, you're probably not going to have internet. And we did have some students that had that, but not very many. So the lack of connectivity at home, the, the ability to have that internet connection, short of going to a business in town where they could kind of get onto their free Wi-Fi, that was also a problem. I know, thanks to the Board of Education, there was at least an opportunity for a few students through a contract to have a hotspot that has been purchased on a monthly basis throughout the school year, and I can tell you that one of our graduating seniors this year had that in the, in the student's home for at least six months, and is graduating specifically because of that ability to do those classes at home as well as in the classroom. Still with, the last thing, which was a, a challenge there as well, just to mention quickly, is still attendance is a problem. And some of the students that we were dealing with this year, that's really what got them into the predicament in the first place, and we know that, and it was still with their modified day and their modified week, it was still a challenge to work with their attendance and motivation to try to get them to realize that that's their best bet.
And I think one thing that, and Mr. Dennison, you know, we all worked very hard, is just because they were in our Ed's Options Program, they still were held to a very strict, I guess, expectation of attendance and work toward completing of, of their coursework, and if they did not show up to school or they did not connect and, and work on their, on their courses, they were processed through the court as we would of any other students. So that attendance, we kept as a very serious issue, and we wanted to stay up on top of the students as much as we could, and held them to what we thought was a pretty high standard, so.
And you may think that that kind of contradicts itself, well, how do you have online and the ability to do things at home, but you still expect them to come into the lab hours to work at school? And it, it doesn't take too many examples to some of the, look at some of those digital competitors in our school district, to know that the Trekkas and the E-Cots and the virtual this and that are not successful for most students, and that's because they hand them a device and they say, congratulations, good luck, let us know if you have any problems, and they have no physical contact with the student. And we felt for our kids to be successful, even if it was at a, at a small degree compared to the normal student that's in the traditional classroom, they needed to have that connection with our staff and with the school building physically to make sure that they were still coming in. And again, while nine out of the class of ninety-six that's going to be graduating may not seem like great percentages, that's, that's nearly ten percent of our kids that otherwise would possibly not be graduating in a, in a few days. So to meet some of these challenges for the upcoming school year, really what we're looking at, well, the Board of Education, I appreciate it, you have already made strides to approve a service agreement for next year so that we will be able to have more mobile devices, we will be able to have that connectivity as well for those students, not just for the educational options, but also for the bigger picture of the students that are in the traditional classrooms at the secondary building. And as you could see, some of those things we struggled with a few minutes ago, I think that's going to be huge for us. And with these laptops, as I mentioned, they are going to be wired internally with that connectivity, and what are the two of the three things that we had as our biggest struggles? You've addressed those, and we're excited to work with administration, with Brian Baines, during the summer, to have those ready for our students in the fall. So moving on to next year, here are a few things that you've kind of heard bits and pieces about, but we definitely want to continue with the efforts we've had this first year and with the success we've had with these numbers, along with Dr. Burke. I was in a few of the meetings that he addressed to different students by class when they were preparing for scheduling for next year courses, and I, I can't quote him, but the bottom line was, he said, listen, kids, you're not going to be sitting in study halls with, or in classes during the day, two or three or more study halls, it's just not going to happen. And as a part of that, we've been able to roll out electronic e-courses, I believe Dr. Burke probably made mention of that in one of the last couple of board meetings, and the actual numbers that we have presented are, with fifty-three different students in the top three grades, they have requested a hundred and two courses electronically. These are courses that, rather than sitting in those study halls, kind of, well, some kids use study halls for what they're intended for, and some don't. Ms. Lewis can attest to that as a student going through life school. Not that she hasn't used them to their intended purpose. However, we all know that, and that's not changed over decades of study halls. And it should be pointed out that these one hundred and two course requests are completely separate from any type of class that we offer inside the traditional classroom. These are electives that, as Haley Chester mentioned, may enhance a student's learning because, well, we just don't offer veterinarian sciences in our high school. If a student has maybe some aspiration to get into that field, this will give them the opportunity to see what it maybe is like through an electronic course as an elective and help their studies before they actually get out of high school.
And, and you know, with that, you know, we did limit students to no more than two e-courses per year, so that'd be one each semester, those are semester courses. So as we're going through this, through Dennison and I, with a little bit of success, we're trying to get through course request sheets, and really, the, the problems we're following, we're finding is that, you know, some kids just didn't sign up for enough courses and still going in and then helping fill those. That, that kids are allowed to have one study hall each semester and then one e-course each semester if they choose. And the majority of our e-courses are taken by our eleventh and twelfth graders, not very many sophomores have the flexibility in their schedule yet, trying to get in all those core courses that they need to be able to fit those electives in. So we're, we're pretty positive about the turnout so far, and it's not to say that this could not increase if students work quickly through those, if they finish one sem, you know, semester course a little bit early and want to begin the next, but there's really no reason for that not to happen. So we're very positive. And, and talking with some students, I think they even failed to look through all the course offerings we did have, as we, as I, we worked with some of our soon-to-be juniors, you know, what do you want to do after high school? Well, you know, I kind of maybe want to be a social worker, am I sure? Well, you thought about this, this course in diversity or this course here? All I even know about was there. And so as we take them through it, we do want to try to tailor the educational options for those juniors and seniors to try to give them some exposure to some things that they're going to want to study in college or what they want to go into for a career, and criminal justice, and law, and, and those courses. Forensic science were two of the more popular choices, I think, in the digits than all the other courses.
These are a few that are, that are offered as electives.
You know, digital art, there was a few there, forensic science seemed to be a very positive one, a few for Gothic literature. So I think it just offers some things to, again, enhance the learning, not replace anything, just to enhance. anything, just enhance it, make it a little bit more personal, and make it a little more personalized for each kid, because not everybody wants to do forensic science, but if I want to go into that field, that would be very, very interesting to me. But quite a few principles of healthcare, and because of those who want to go into the health field, it did not go to pioneers, so give them a little more exposure.
And again, this is, in addition to our efforts, we're going to continue with the credit recovery portion of that, to help kids who may be deficient with credits towards their graduation. This is kind of on the other end of the spectrum, if you will, to challenge and to offer some new things to those students that have no problem with graduation requirements, they're looking for something more than that. In addition to that, the thing that I'm really excited about for all the teaching staff is the possibility to offer some blended learning opportunities. When you saw that list of elective courses, you did not see your basic Englishes and biology or math courses or social studies, because those are things we already offer by our staff members. And I was just speaking with a staff member today, and it seems strange, I've said this a number of times throughout the year on the telephone, talking with business vendors and with other people, but now that I find myself in position as a person in charge of this online schooling, I've still said multiple times, the best place for our kids to have success is not online, it's in the classroom with the teacher in a traditional manner, with someone who's been trained and is a professional educator. That being said, this is also, for next school year, going to tie right into that, because all of those basic core classes, if you will, that we offer at the secondary building, our staff members are going to be able to tie into this network of online secondary library courses or the academic library. And each staff member already has created for them an account that they can access the online curriculum. They can use any parts of that that they wish to, to blend in with their regular class that they're teaching, whether it be just for lecture purposes or to enhance part of what they already have prepared. There are student assessments that are on there that they can use for some of the student learning objectives, possibly. And there are even end-of-course exams, all of which have been tied to the Common Core as well. I know that's maybe questionable as to how that's going to work out here in Ohio, but that's also available. So, a few of the things there that we're going to have through our secondary site license, again, is for the opportunity for any staff member to use any core course that they wish in conjunction with their classroom next year. And if a teacher really does want their entire class to be able to access that, to work online, a great opportunity for Blizzard bags, because you've got electronic curriculum already in place, then we'll also have the availability to give students accounts and access to some of those core classes, and to be able to use some of those online curriculum areas within classrooms as well. So, those are the things that we're looking to expand, and again, I thank you for your support. Even though the second year is just getting ready to start, we're already brainstorming for year three of how we're going to expand this even more so and challenge possibly some of our post-secondary students, and maybe work with what initiatives are going on with dual enrollment for next year, and see how that can be expanded even onto the online courses as well for dual enrollment for college-bound students. What questions, if any, can I attempt to answer? And if I can, Dr. Burke will.
I think for the presentation, I just want to compliment you, Kevin, and everyone who's been involved with this. I mean, it's very exciting to see how things are just changing so much with how students can, just the learning that they're going to be able to do, things that they don't know, that they're going to be able to get involved in, so that they can make a decision which will change their career, because they're going to get exposure to something really new. It's just such an exciting time for the district, for our teachers and students going forward. Really appreciate that.
I appreciate that, thank you. And I know in some informal conversations with Dr. Johnson and with some people that are taking courses elsewhere as adults, I know that our universities are also getting very involved with the online course pieces as well. And I really feel that by our students at U.S.A.R.'s having the opportunity to start with this experience at the high school level, that's going to give them just one more step of preparation as they move forward towards some higher education as well.
Now, you mentioned that it's interesting, at Bowling Green undergraduate, it's amazing how many students have never even used like Canvas or LiveWord. You know? So, I think our students, our students are in good shape in regard to that. One of the questions I had was, with those e-courses, with that big list, are those self-paced? Does the student need to follow either the teacher through those, or if they've got connectivity at home, can they just go through that?
They are, in fact, self-paced. Each of them come with a curriculum that can be shared with the teacher, whether it's in the traditional classroom or if it's in our kind of self-paced program. But it is, in fact, possible for the motivated and academically, academically, student, that they could, in fact, work through at an accelerated pace and actually get a semester course done in less time than a semester. And for some of the courses, they also have the opportunity to give credit for prior knowledge that the student has. If for some reason I've made my way through part of Algebra I class as an example, but I didn't make it through all of it, I remember some of the basics from my Algebra I class, and through the interaction with the computer course, it's going to assess where I am and what I already know, and give me credit for prior knowledge, which also sometimes helps speed that process up of working at my own pace.
There's pieces to that to also maintain the integrity of the course and the work to make sure that our kids are doing the work and maybe not having someone assist them along the way a little more than they need. The capstone project or the big piece, the tests, the assessments, are all going to be locked and have to be opened up, or they have to do those in front of their mentor or at the school, or at least we need to see that they are doing the work and then open it up so that we can't see them do the work, to make sure that they are, in fact, gaining that knowledge and showing mastery of the content and not someone else. So, we are going to be able to put little locks and keys on things to make sure that kids are progressing and also that they're not going too fast, too, you know, ahead, so that mentor can maintain some time.
And that's kind of behind the scenes as far as the system management's concerned. As Dr. Burke mentioned, we certainly are concerned about the integrity, and all of the tests, the mastery test, the unit test, the semester test, are proctored and taken on campus. So, if there's some question as to who or how a program has been worked through, we have the knowledge that a student has, in fact, done all of the testing in front of the teachers and at the campus here.
And I'm glad to hear that a lot of the assessments and the course assessments are tied into the Common Core, because I got to believe our legislature's not going to back off on that one all set and done. And then the last thing I'll say is, that attendance thing, you know, I, in a situation now where I talk to a lot of employers about, you know, job skills and work preparation, and boy, that's an issue with them. And like, I think what Woody Allen said, you know, half, ninety percent of success is showing up. And so, anything we can do to work on that piece of it.
And we stay on it. I know that Mr. Dennis took a number of students to, you know, through due report, as with what else, and depending on the students, you know, students that had gotten themselves into some difficulty, you know, as they each signed a contract to be there, it was very detailed and spelled out, how many days a week and how many hours you will be long on, or you'll be considered trillant. And it's spelled out, they sign it, we sign it, and they're held to that standard. And we don't back off from that, because it is important. Because if we don't do that, they'll have as much success with us as they do with our competitors, which isn't much. And taking, as we PD into some of this a little bit, PD will be a big part of this. We can give a lot of tools to our teachers, but if we don't show them how to use it, it'll be a little cumbersome and hard to get through. But as I look through there and through some of these practice tests and just kind of look at the courses, and if kids get through, you know, taking these courses, it will prepare them for that next, that next phase, either college, those next-gen tests that we're going to be taking, where you have to not only read and understand what the question's asking you to do, but also manipulate the computer to make your answer happen. And so, I just think that puts our kids another step ahead of folks around us, because we're giving those, giving our kids those opportunities. And it's exciting, and I'm sure we'll hit a few bumps, but that's part of it. And then, so we're just looking forward to it, and we, again, support, I appreciate your support in helping us keep this program going.
I'd like to just commend all of you, really. I mean, it's from the very beginning to the very end, and it's, some of that stuff that you were talking about, Mrs. Hoover, was really very interesting to how the learning happens. And you can see how that piece ties directly into how they end up meeting, or not even the downside of meeting, but those driven students. And nine students is a testament to the success of the program right out of the gate. And the success that's yet to be tapped into is very exciting for all of us, and we appreciate your efforts.
Thank you.
Got my own chokes.
Thank you, Mr. Foreman and Dr. Burke, I appreciate that. Mr. Foreman took a huge leap of faith leaving the classroom after twenty-eight year, twenty-seven, twenty-eight years, to believe in a direction that I think that I've been passionate about and providing non-traditional education route for our students. And I appreciate his willingness to venture down the road and lead us down the road of this endeavor. So, thank you very much.
All right. Got my reading glasses. All right, we, I'm going to give a motion for the approval of the minutes in the April twenty-fourth, two thousand fourteen regular meeting. So, any discussion? Hold call, please.
Mr. Schiefer?
Yes.
Ms. Woodrow?
Yes.
Dr. Johnson?
Yes.
Yes. And can I get a motion for the approval of the treasurer's financial report dated April thirtieth, two thousand fourteen? So.
Thank you. Good evening. In our report, we finished the month of April, the general fund, spending seventy-six thousand five hundred dollars for broadening, not a horrible one, given where our cash balance stands. Not going to spend a lot of time tonight talking about the House Bill two sixty-four program, we've addressed that. Solar project is on target, I had communication with them last week. One more engineering approval, going to be a D for their final sign-off. Still anticipating right around the time of school ends for this project to commence. So, we're still on schedule, with time for the sunny summer, I hope shows up. In your packet, we received an updated five-year forecast, going to spend the bulk of my time tonight, for the next two minutes, kind of reviewing that, highlighting some of the uncertainty as we move forward and some of the positive news, with the shift in the finances mainly attributed to the change in the healthcare, consortium changes made late last year. If you have that in front of you, great. If not, I'll give you kind of my snapshot of where I think we're going to end up for this fiscal year, projecting a deficit of just over seventy-eight thousand dollars. This could swing into a positive situation. It's kind of giving me an ulcer worrying about, are we going to pay for this new bus purchase of approximately ninety thousand dollars this fiscal year, or is it going to hit next? I err on the side of caution and threw it into my projections that we may pay it this year. So, there's the outside changes, money in the black. Next year, the full force of the fiscal year kicks in on our healthcare savings, as well as some increased funding from the state due to our guarantee that we're on slash cap. Should in the year if staffing levels remain the same, we don't experience an excruciating drop in enrollment, things line up as we project, though, five hundred eighty-seven thousand dollars to the positive. Obviously, medical trends can change, things can happen, maybe we'll get a influx of students, we'll need to make some adjustments to staffing levels. Again, I think it's extremely important that we are somewhat fluid with those as we decrease in enrollment. Staffing trends would mirror those, as we've seen in the past. I know we had some cuts a few years ago, but it's important to tweak those as we go. That will conclude the first binding of budget under Governor Kasich, and as we head into fiscal year sixteen and beyond, the talk in Columbus is what the fifteen point we need right now, looks pretty sound for reelection. They don't anticipate any radical changes to the budget, but there is absolutely no information leaking out at this point in time on where we end with that. I think we'll, at this point, remain in the black for fiscal year two thousand sixteen, which is, again, very positive, given the trend we've had in place through previous fiscal years. And then, again, looking at the rising cost and expenses coupled with what I projected is about a two percent increase in our state aid, which accounts for about sixty-nine to seventy percent of our budget, probably going to have a roughly two hundred sixty-eight thousand dollar deficit ballooning to six hundred and twenty-seven thousand dollars in two thousand and eighteen. The good news in that is, with the board policy, that we have a twenty-five percent of our operating budget needing to be held in reserves. We're comfortably through that threshold through fiscal year two thousand and seventeen. Two thousand and eighteen is questionable, but I think as we kick the can down the road financially, with our carryover balance, we can mitigate that policy and not have any strenuous adjustments on the fiscal side. Revenue update, we had an accuracy rate of approximately ninety-eight point six-two percent of our revenues were dialed in. Biggest fluctuation was we received an increase of about a hundred ninety-two thousand dollars in additional state aid, due in part to House Bill fifty-nine, trade of our more issues from fiscal year thirteen earlier this spring. Expenditures, we're very comfortable with where we're at, dialed in for ninety-nine point two-five percent accuracy on our forecast, slightly up due to our capital outlay, we're over about a hundred and nine thousand, ninety thousand dollar bus purchase that's going to be stepped up a year earlier. So, it's a timing issue there. Cash balance for May, we've improved by a hundred and ten thousand dollars over the last amount of forecast due in October. Again, that's due in part to increased revenue from the state of Ohio. As I mentioned earlier, probably the biggest risk and uncertainty we face is what's going to come out of Columbus in the next binding of budget, sixty-nine percent of our revenues. So, we're heavily reliant on whatever changes, positively or negatively, that they make at the State House. The only guesstimate, if you will, the TPP reimbursements for the next, excuse me, the state is potentially going to repurpose four hundred eighty-two million dollars of that that are used to pay TPP reimbursement and shift it over into their formula for education. That's probably the only talk we're hearing. If that happens, I think our cap amount will increase substantially more than two percent of that over there. Again, it's uncertainty, that's probably the most likely change we'll see, based on the session we're taking in Columbus at this point. Overall, I think Mr. Kimmel would agree, we're on the right track financially. Obviously, I don't like to see any deficits, but they're much smaller than what we had when I arrived here eighteen months ago. So, I think we're on the right track, staffs made changes, we're heading the right direction with healthcare, we're going to actively begin that committee here at the end of the month or the next week, continue to further tweak that, because it's such a large expenditure item, that's the only have the most direct control over. And you can see the impact it has on the bottom line moving forward.
Questions?
So, that TPP reimbursement, that's the money that the legislature stole from us a couple years ago.
That's a good way to put it, yeah.
The only way to put it.
It is, that's exactly what they did. We're fortunate that with our continuing levies, we're locked into what we were receiving on that front, but at the same time, if they repurpose that into budget overall, it could positively impact us. We don't know yet, that's kind of the word on the street, if you will. The jury's out. Cautiously optimistic, we're forecasting two percent, anything above that would be horrible.
So, is it still, if they give it back?
But we're not getting it back like the level that we had in local?
No, no. And, you know, we've had the statements made this year that it's the largest increase in, I forget how many years, five, six years in school funding, but what they don't say is it's on the field of the largest decreases in school funding in thirty years. So, I guess it depends on what side of the hunt.
But we're not getting it back like the level that we had in local?
No, no. And you know, we've had the statements made this year that it's the largest increase in, I forget how many years, five, six years in school funding. What they don't say is it's on the field of the largest decreases in school funding in 30 years. So, I guess it depends on what side of the spectrum you're making your argument from. Overall, I am cautiously optimistic. We're heading the right way financially.
That would give our money back.
It's nice that maybe we have in the black some of our forecasts instead of years of continuing already.
Yes, it is.
That concludes my report.
Well, the, we roll call for that.
Dr. Johnson?
Yes.
Ms. Woodrow?
Yes.
Mr. Schiefer?
Yes.
Mr. Murph?
Yes.
All right. Moving on to the committee reports. Excuse me. Obviously, Mr. Stone's absence will bypass the legislative report. And who's going to lose blood route for athletics?
We had our spring athletes went to the elementary school on May 13th for a pep rally. The softball scoreboard is in. Is it up yet or we're still waiting?
No, we're collecting quotes for the scoreboard. The lowest quote at this point is close to $7,000 to install it. So, we're without electricity. It's important to have a scoreboard electric. So, we're currently gathering some other quotes to see if we can get it cheaper. So, the scoreboard came free due to advertising and we're just trying to figure our way to get it installed.
Silver panel on the. Might not be bad to hit them up for some kind of sponsorship. I'll let you mention that.
We had an opportunity at our last athletic council meeting this month to see the new football track and cross-country record boards that are really sharp looking, very, very nice. A few things have to be corrected, a few misspellings and that kind of thing, but very, very nice. And those will go up on the, I believe Ms. Woodrow said, on the wall kind of in the corner nearby is off.
There are.
There are, yeah.
Oh, there are? Okay, great. There are. Pictures for the three athletes that qualified for the wall of fame have been taken. M.C. Shear's basketball with her total lifetime scoring on there is in the showcase and will stay there unless, if and when that record is ever broken, she'll get her ball back then if that happens. And then we're going to get new N-10 conference boards. I think it was described as the slide in, slide out with the names of the teams in our league this summer. All the summer sports camps are posted on the school website. So, I would say anyone who's interested in wanting to get any of those camps needs to look for the dates there. And I know our girls softball team will be playing what, Clyde tomorrow night?
At Clyde.
Okay. And I did not hear how our track kids did yesterday. Let's see if it's in the papers. I don't know.
We had several student, or athletes move on to the finals, which is tomorrow. We had some that have already qualified for regionals. And we have several athletes sitting in first or second place that are in the finals best times. So, very excited about that. That was the girls. I believe the boys competed tonight.
Yesterday. Boys were yesterday, girls today.
Yeah. I only heard a girls' report. I did not hear the boys' report.
I didn't hear anything about the boys' report either, but I don't make it one if you should apply.
He set a new record.
First place.
Set a new personal record. That's great. That's awesome.
All in all, very good. The music's coming.
Oh, that's right. Yeah. And that's, I believe, our first boys ever, well, first ever, isn't it? Yeah.
First boy. He's getting a lot of stuff.
Yeah. That's all I have.
And there's still time for those who want to get involved in the touchdown club scrimmage.
Yes.
I didn't mean to ditch the theme, so I've got a better replacement for me anyway.
Not touching. It was quite fun. Yeah, anybody that is interested in playing, it's a great fundraiser for the football program. Feeding the teams, team, should say. And it's a good day, a lot of fun. That's it.
Thanks, Rose.
And Mrs. Stone, he's absent. So, we'll move on to Dr. Johnson.
Well, I don't have a report tonight as far as student achievement. We've already had some terrific reports from our administrative department.
I'm going to turn my report over to somebody who's more knowledgeable than I.
Well, for wellness, the last meeting was in April, but it's just a few things to talk about for wellness nutrition. The summer program application was approved by ODE, so we are going to continue that. Same number of sites, we picked up four lots across town. They're going to do their own this year. Downey, we lost home site, but we picked up another. The mayor's office really wants to support the program and downy and grow it. So, that's going to be very helpful. We were also approved for the summer weekend backpack program due to, it's funded through the governor's office, not from, we start a backpack program. And I received a call today from the governor's office that they will be, we have a visit scheduled for June 20th. Don't know if he's going to be attending, but somebody from his office will be here. But if he will be attending, I will sure to let everyone know.
Remind me of talking about I have a dance, dance, or a person holding dance classes in the like gym this summer, just for three days, but I want to make sure it interferes with the pack.
Please come pre-packed. I just hand them out.
Perfect. Okay.
And that concludes the wellness.
All right. Well, thank you for picking me up. Thanks. And Ms. Lewis?
Well, on Tuesday, the, we had the fifth grade orientation along with the energy carnival for science club. The Renaissance trip for juniors and seniors is tomorrow. We are going to the reformatory. Graduation is next weekend.
Just a visit, right?
Yes, just a visit, just a visit. Graduation is next weekend and of course, all the seniors are very excited. Our first graduation practice is next Thursday at 8:00. And Thursday is also the senior awards and baccalaureate ceremony. And that was my report.
Great. Well, thank you very much. I'd like to thank you for your time as well. You've done a nice job. Mr. Kimmel?
I just have two quick items tonight because I deviated most of my time in the presentations. So, last time we met, OSBA representatives to start the process of the surveying as a result of our staff focus meetings. Very productive meeting. And we'll be looking to get some sample surveys sent to us from OSBA. And they're going to help us with the process of targeting our enrollment student families to get some feedback on why families choose, some families choose to be educated elsewhere. So, very good discussions and I'm excited about that process as it goes forward. Secondly, I'd like to, part of the agenda tonight is to introduce our new athletic director, Mr. Rossen. After spending 27 years of successful teaching in the classroom in our district, including several different coaching stints and also middle school athletic director, something about the 27 years in the district as a teacher and then trying something new. But Rick's very excited about the new challenge and would welcome everybody to wish him the best of luck in his new endeavor.
I'm honored for the opportunity.
That concludes my report. We are on to the personnel certified staff.
Brad, before you do that, it says opportunity to regress for night in talks to treasurer. I just wanted to note that, you know, everybody always says people go elsewhere, take their children elsewhere. There were four generations of my family here tonight, all VHS graduates at this meeting. 1940, my mother, 1948. We're up to Logan this year, so.
And more to come.
And more to come. Yes, that last more. You have this one for two.
All right.
President Murph, members of the board, it's my recommendation to you approve items A through F on the personnel certified staff section of the agenda.
I'm just jumping in. It's working out well. Ms. Woodrow?
Yes.
Dr. Johnson?
Yes.
Mr. Schiefer?
Yes.
Thank you. And Mr. Murph?
Yes.
I was going to say you needed me. Yeah.
You got water? All right. We went through.
President Murph, it's my recommendation to approve items A through E on the personnel certified staff section of the agenda.
Can I get a motion for that, please?
Exactly.
Any discussion? Thank you. Roll call please. Mr. Schiefer?
Yes.
Dr. Johnson?
Yes.
Ms. Woodrow?
Yes.
Mr. Murph?
Yes.
President Murph, it's my recommendation to you approve items A through J under the business section of the agenda.
Motion, please. Court, any discussion? Roll call, please. Ms. Woodrow?
Yes.
Dr. Johnson?
Yes.
Mr. Schiefer?
Yes.
Mr. Murph?
Yes.
Under discussions, we just have two items. First one is athletic handbook. I will say there's three things updated in there. One is date changes. Second one is NCC to Northern 10 language. And the third piece is code of conduct. There's two minor changes. One is you have, you're allowed to come into school by 10:30 instead of 9:30 and still be allowed to take part in activities in the evening. That came out of recommendation from the athletic council to move it from 9:30 to 10:30. This is slight change. And the second piece is the code of conduct, the removal of the fees. And so, we took the $30 piece out and just say that yearly, the Board of Education will set the fees associated to initial drug testing fees. So, just to clean up that language a little bit. So, that's the only thing in the athletic handbook. I'm not asking for approval tonight. Simply have that on as a discussion tonight. Look it over the next month. If there's any questions that you have, please let me know, but we'll ask to approve that at the June meeting. Any questions on that? The second piece is lunch prices for 2014 and 15. Mrs. Pennington has some information to share with you with regards to the history of our lunch prices and the reason for this discussion this evening. Mrs. Pennington?
Thank you, Mr. Kimmel. More copies with somebody? This comes with the USDA, of course, there'll be hunger, healthy, free, healthy kid, free act, whatever, half death is what we call it. We are required to approve this act passed in 2010 to make sure pricing for paid students with the smaller amount of reimbursement that we get for paid students equals the amount that we get for free students. So, therefore, we're not taking money from free kids to get paid for lunches for paid kids. That's why the government has decided to do this. I had to complete a spreadsheet, they call the simplified format, and it's actually a couple spreadsheets you have to do in order to figure out that we have, the average weighted price, which is on the top, this is a total page, is $2.65. So, really, if you take a price for the elementary and add and get an average of the two lunch prices, it comes to $2.62. We should be at $2.65 for next year according to the USDA. So, my recommendation would be, we could do 5 cents, but then next year we'll probably have to raise it again. I would like to see the board, you can discuss it, to raise it 10 cents. That really would have another year possibly. The board has to do that. I know my staff would have to deal with dimes and nickels, but that's what they have to do. They have to do that. We do have a lot of parents that do pay online, so that I don't think that's going to be as big an issue as in the past. On the second page, I did a history since I've been here, what the lunch prices are or were. I mean, we've been, our current prices for this year and the two previous years, and we raised them in 2011, 12 school year based on this regulation. I also have the neighboring school that speaks what their lunch prices are currently. They may or may not raise them next year. The one that I see that will not have to is current profit. But they may, you can raise it higher if you choose to, but I mean, you don't have to. And then the next couple pieces is I've done budgets. And I wrote at the top, if it's a 10 cents, we did no change by a cent, 15 or 25 to see what the impact would be on our bottom line. We are budgeted for, with the 10 cent increase, about a $25,000 loss, but this does not include our summer program. There was no way to include our revenues, so I didn't even put our cost in this. We usually, the last five years, have made a profit of $8,000, $8,000 to $10,000 off our summer program. So, that goes to the bottom line. And also, we're going to see some savings with retirements that are not in here also. So, we are, as for Sabato, we are going to guarantee a regiment where this now.
We're guaranteed the next two years, I believe, to lose no money in our lunch program contract to that.
So.
So, a shortfall? Yes, there is a shortfall. I don't think there's going to be a shortfall. In fact, it was in the black. What that agreement does is it guarantees us in the black, but at the same time, let's say we would make $60,000 and not going to be paying $25,000 of this year. We would reimburse them for what they've covered on our losses, but we have that downside protection. It's kind of insurance policy, if you will, we're not going to have to transfer money. Okay.
Do you have any questions?
I just had to say that, you know, Lori's done a tremendous job with all the changes that've come down the way with regards to the increase in fruits and vegetables and the whole grain. Well, that's kind of changed a little bit, but there's been lots of changes that Lori's kept us on top of. We all know going to grocery store buying fruits and vegetables is much more expensive today than what it was a few years ago. And to recommend a 10% increase in our lunch prices with the extreme increases in gasoline and groceries and beef and those things, I think it's, I don't think it's unreasonable to consider that slight increase after we have not changed for three years.
And the 10, I mean, if you look at our gruyere use numbers, it affects approximately a little over 25% of our student.
Mr. Joseph wanted to know if cookie prices are going to go up.
Well, I can sell anything to adults. There is, I just went to a training yesterday and what of course, you'll probably hear the news, what they call smart snacks. Effective July 1st, 2015, the USDA is regulating what we can sell to students, starting at midnight the day before. And it goes to 30 minutes after the school day. So, there's no reason challenges with that. I have to be, we'll do a nutritional analysis on every item we sell. So, Matt and I have to have that documentation when they come and review the program. So, I don't know. Though I can give you cookies, but I don't know. You sold too soon at this point.
I need to bring it for my wife.
A good for Pat of the house.
I guess I'm not asking for a decision on lunch prices tonight. I think I, I know I concur with Lori's recommendation to raise the 10 cents and still look for that to be a point of potential.
to be a point of potential, a recommendation approved for next month.
Any communications? And announcements?
Just that we have a important week next week coming up, we have senior awards and back, our senior awards banquet back where on Thursday evening, and then graduation is on Sunday, June 1st, 2 o'clock. And the following Wednesday, we have the annual staff recognition, the time to do that at 6 o'clock. So if you have not RSVP'd the team, I'll make sure you do that next week.
And if you'd like to take a step back in time, structurally, tomorrow we have our third grade, geez, Pioneer Day on our front lawn, complete with Chuck Wagon lunch.
Some state bringing the job like that.
What did Bud do?
I know that the dessert is blueberry and peach cobbler than the Dutch oven. I don't know what the other rabbit here.
He's been out a while.
Must have.
He's a fox too.
He's a fox.
All right, well, I think I need to get a motion to recess into executive session to consider the appointment, employment dismissal, discipline, motion, demotion or compensation of a public employee or official. Second, yeah, so roll call, please.
Ms. Woodrow?
Yes.
Mr. Schiefer?
Sure.
Dr. Johnson?
Yes.
Yes. We are in. Is there a statement?